Jump right in, because I gotta turn around and get the kid after him. Okay, let's make it quick. But I got it.
Everyone's approved.
Yeah.
All right. We don't have to be you or you anymore. Will we go?
Yeah.
All right, it is October night. Planning board. And we're not gonna read minutes. Any questions, comments, concerns? No?
Doug is on the phone, he's coming in too.
In hots? All right, all in favor? Great, you need to approve. First up, Michael Roberts Associates.
I'm sorry if I pass out your practice.
Go for it.
Do you want to check out works?
So, oh. Yes, we had. Duncan, that's one work session this week. Do you have anything to do for next week?
Well, our next session.
Right. Okay.
So there's a lot of detail there, you've seen it a couple of times, I'm gonna boil it down to one piece of paper before you get too deep into that stat. That I'm gonna use as a cheat sheet for my comments, you can see what I'm looking at. And hopefully that'll help. Move this along as efficiently as possible.
Should happen. Yes.
Okay. My name is Brody Smith, I'm an attorney of Bonshan and King, and I represent the applicant. This particular application began with the used variance, and now we're in the plant, the planning, site plan approval phase. I know I've been to a couple of your work sessions and a meeting in the past, so I won't start from the beginning, I'm gonna skip right to the cheat sheet here that I, that I generated, there were comments coming out of the last work session about changes that needed to be made to the drawings, and green, those are the light poles for the parking lot, those removed off, off of the curving and in, into, into the grassy area, those light poles are the same number and power of light poles that we previously showed in our drawings, but it was noted by staff that they were in the wrong locations, and so I think they're in the correct spots now. Another thing that was asked for is clarification on the curb detail to make it clear that the the curving would come within three feet from the shoulder per detail that you find elsewhere in the drawings. This update shows that the curb detail has been noted on the site plan, and that's in blue. In red, there was a lot of discussion at previous work sessions and meetings about an emergency light on the back, that, so that's an emergency exit. That light would only be activated in, in the event that, you know, people are exiting that door, it wouldn't be a light that's just on like a, like a steady spot. So that is noted on the notes for the site plan, that that's not a spot that's just gonna be on at night, that that is only for the emergency exit. And then finally, we had someone go out and measure the flag pole, that's in brown, and confirm that the flag pole is 20 feet tall, and that's in the layout notes as well, and I'll stop right there unless there's any questions.
I think that the floodlight needs to be longer than five minutes per code, probably.
An hour and a half? It just has an emergency light.
For the emergency light?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, what's written there, it says, back to the emergency light that activates only when door opens, and shall be on timer to stay on for maximum of five minutes, so you're saying it should be longer?
Yeah.
When it's, even when it's a sensor, but when it's an emergency, it should be on for an hour and a half before the battery dies, but if it's a sensor, when you're just going in and out to the car bill, can it be on a sensor that's shorter?
Is that, I don't, so. I don't think it's actually a required egress, that's what you were going through and looking, right?
Yeah, so the, we eliminated the paved, right, the, the paved path, that's just grass exiting onto the grass, and the we're leaving the door though, we're leaving the emergency door.
Right, so in the, in the event an incident occurs, you open the door, it activates the light.
Correct.
It provides lumens to get somebody from that door to the public way.
Correct.
But it's not a required?
No, it is, he said he left the emergency exit.
The door, yeah, the door is still there, they didn't want to lose the door, they didn't want to go to just a one, one entrance.
It's still an emergency egress, so the emergency light has to have a battery pack of an hour and a half.
But does that require it to stay on for an hour and a half? Or that it needs?
In an emergency situation, it has to stay on for an hour and a half, but like the regular sensor light, if he's using it for some other reason, like if they took the trash out, it doesn't have to stay on for an hour and a half, but anytime they use the light in an emergency.
If the alarm is triggered, it stays on for an hour and a half, if somebody pushes the crash bar and goes out the back door, it stays on for five minutes.
I guess it depends.
No, it sounds more. Nothing actuates it except for the opening of the door. I don't have a problem with that.
Right.
Right, no, that's, that's what we looked for, I think it's the duration that you're trying to.
The duration under the lights.
And so if the only thing that turns it on is that door, it should be an hour and a half, if it, if you're saying that it only turns on as an emergency light.
Can we modify that note in there instead of maximum five minutes to read 90 minutes?
We consent to that condition, we wouldn't have to come back for, for, we could still vote tonight, right?
We would say right now, I mean, that would have to be worked out between you and her.
And lighting controls, huh?
Yeah.
I can consent to that. Yeah. But we'd still be able to get to a, a vote tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Because it's emergency lighting must have a 90-minute battery backup, right Bill?
Yes.
If you bring us a new plan, we'll just do it as a field change.
Good, that sounds great.
We should.
What if the new plan is modified to?
Emergency lighting must have a 90-minute battery backup.
And then updated plan should have the same date as what we're approving, right?
Right.
Okay, so don't update the date.
And don't change the date.
Don't change the date, okay.
Don't change the date.
We're just gonna submit in our existing passage.
Okay.
I think we're simple stuff, right?
Gotcha, let's make the change to the note.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Concerns, modifications, something? I'm gonna start reading. A motion. Motion to approve the plan dated 10/1/2025, including drawings C1-6 photometric plans and cut sheets dated 10/2/2025, and architectural plans and elevations, last updated 8/11/2025, with the following findings and conditions. The applicant has been granted on 4/24/2025, a used variance on the zoning board of appeals. For the use proposed for this site and any conditions of that approval are incorporated by reference herein. Site plan has been reviewed and is approved in accordance with the used variances, and with review for compatibility of the site improvements with the adjust adjacent residential neighborhood. This board has reviewed the Onadog County County Referral dated May 21st, 2025, and well, 23/2024, which noted that the project will have no significant adverse intercommunity or county-wide implications. This board has reviewed the SEAF about looking dated 11/22/2024, and finding no significant adverse environmental impact from the project grants a negative secret declaration for this on listed actions. Conditions for this approval. One, the applicant must at all times maintain a clear path for ingress and egress, south side of the building, to public road, pedestrian access, including but not limited to snow removal and ice removal. Number two, the note on the plan must be modified to note that emergency lighting must have a 90-minute backup. Number three.
Okay.
This approval is made with the further conditions that this approval is for plans and other submitted documents, site plan documents that have been signed by the planning board chairperson, and the applicant, all of the work shown be completed by the applicant. In order for certificate of occupancy or compliance to be issued, any proposed changes, additions, or deletions to the scope of work or materials from the site plan documents are not approved and are subject to further site plan review pursuant to Town and the Wick Section 192-122. Motion to approve. Randy, Kathy, all in favor? Great. Each other is almost here. Oh, we can't count on his eyes. Yep, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, you have Turbel Road.
Get Terry voice here with me as well.
Hi Terry.
Hi.
All right, Turbel Road, this is the EV charger. Last we spoke, it was around the fencing and the generator. Terry, do you want to give us kind of a, a quick update on where that stands?
Uh, yes, so the fencing for the generator, so we added that to the site plan along with uh, some shrubs in front of it. Uh, it would be, since the generator is about nine feet tall, the fence would have that height as well, and it would be matching the existing uh, fence dumpster enclosure, and those are the images that we show. So it will be built pretty much the same way, it'll be taller, and it'll be stained to match that. Um, and we also added a diagram for the elect, the panel, electric panel, which is also enclosed in the fence.
Okay, and we've worked with them on this one, I don't know, any questions, concerns?
I have one comment. This note three on here. Scroll down a little further. Says that yep, down, scroll a little further. Paint fence to match existing dumpster enclosure.
Stains.
Is your intent to keep the wood?
Yes, okay.
It should stain and stain.
The, the images show it kind of there, but the, the wording just said paint, so I just wanted to clarify that.
It would match, okay. That's all I got. Sheet is that on L003?
L003.
Okay. All right, I'll before the motion to approve the site plan last dated 9/26/2025, with the following findings and conditions. This board has reviewed the Onadog County Board on a planning board administrative review dated 9/17/2025, which recommended approval. This board has reviewed the SEAF of applicant dated 8/25/2025, and finding no significant adverse environmental impacts from the project, grants a negative secret declaration for this on listed actions. But one condition on there. Uh, condition one is to change the note number three on sheet L003 to be stained instead of paint. This approval is made with the further condition that this approval is for plans and other submitted documents, site plan documents that have been signed by the planning board chairperson. Any applicant requires that all of the work shown be completed by the applicant in order for certificate of occupancy or compliance to be issued. Any proposed changes, additions, or deletions to the scope of work or materials on the site plan documents are not approved and are subject to further site plan review pursuant to Town and the Wick Section 192-122. I shall move second. Any on favor? Anonymous, thank you.
Have a good day.
You too.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Very Terry.
Bye.
All right, number three, Reed Jewelers and Rolex for multi-tenant signage. And applicant online?
Uh, yes, this is Chris McCaffrey with Alrich Sign Company.
Can you state your name again, sorry?
It's Chris McCaffrey.
Okay, hi Chris.
Hi, how are you?
Good, uh, so if you want to give us a a quick update?
Sure, so at the last meeting, we talked about the Reed's Jewelers signage, as well as the Rolex sign, and the board requested that we update the drawings to just kind of clarify it a little bit, where we just showed the Reed's Jewelers and the uh, Rolex elevations, and we got rid of some measurements that were, I guess, a little bit confusing with the awnings. And then we also updated the elevation showing the future tenant signage um, on the south elevation, that's the, that's the parking lot side where Reed's Jewelers will be located. And we just noted that any future signage would meet the criteria that we provided in the chart, as well as, uh, they will match the Reed's Jewelers letters being black, uh, finish, reverse illumination, um, so that the entire, that entire elevation is consistent.
Okay. And for clarity, there is no monument sign that we are reviewing today?
That's correct.
Right? And then the other tenant signage meets those, we do not have any tenant signage or any intent to have tenant signage on the left-hand side there, I mean, that's all in that residential zone.
That's right.
So we've added, had the applicant add the note up there? Okay. Any questions? All right. And before the motion to approve the site plan last dated 9/24/2025 and 10/6/2025, which are inking.
Sorry, we're okay having them have the different colors from the one signs to the Rolex signs?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then.
Elevations are consistent with each other.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep.
It's only three.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Which are in connection with signage, only with the following findings and conditions. This approval is for signage, including the Reed's Jewelers and Rolex signs as presented on the plan, and including the location of intended tenant signage on the locations as set, as set forth and described in the plan, including the multi-tenant sign package over. This approval is not intended to otherwise modify any prior approvals or conditions therein as relates to the site, which are in full course and effect. Any elevations and facade, facade depictions on the site plan are for informational purposes only, in connection with the signed approval herein. I don't know, but it's not flush mouth signage.
That's what someone, that's what I, what is this? It's the signage is gonna be not raceway.
Yeah, it's reverse illuminated.
Okay.
So.
Not both of them.
No, they're backwards, so like the Rolex one is illuminated from the front and the read are from the back.
And then the other tenant sign is though, other tenant signage is the same as Reed's, it's the reverse illuminated.
Yeah, I guess if we just say.
Signage?
No. No raceway lit signage is permitted, will, will be sufficient, then we won't try to.
Okay.
Okay.
So that'll say, you know, no raceway, uh, signage is permitted?
As depicted on the plan.
Correct.
Because it doesn't show that.
Got it.
This board has reviewed the SEAF of applicant dated 8/25/2025, and finding no significant adverse environmental impact from the project grants a negative secret declaration for this on listed action. This matter is exempt from Onadog County Planning Board referral, and this approval was made with further condition that this is this approval is for plans and other submitted documents, site plan documents that have been signed by the planning board chairperson, and the applicant requires that all the work shown be completed by the applicant in order for certificate of occupancy or compliance to be issued. Any proposed changes, additions, or deletions to the scope of work or materials uh, for the site plan documents are not approved and are subject to further site plan review pursuant to Town and the Wick Code Section 192-122. Motion to approve, Kathy? Kevin, all in favor? Anonymous, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much, I also wanted to just say thank you to Eric and Alana, they were very helpful throughout the whole process, as you know, it's a little complicated, so they were very helpful throughout, so I appreciate that.
That's great.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
You're welcome.
Okay. We have three concept reviews in front of us, first up is Residence Inn. Athlete Online?
Yes, this is Julie Tittle with Missachio Architects.
Wonderful, you got probably about a 10-minute window here, why don't you give us an update on what you're looking at doing?
Okay, one part of it is updating signage for the building. That's it, yep, so in, in the first image, it shows the current signage that's above the front door. Yep, they're on the left, and then on the right, the proposed new signage to replace it, and then at the entrance to the property, on the left is the existing sign, monument sign, and on the right-hand side, the proposed sign.
All right, signage out of it.
Right. And then the other portion is removing the existing canopy at the front entrance. It's currently a metal post in frame with a canvas top or cover on it. And we would like to remove that and change it and install a wood post and framed structure. And let's see, the front doors are also being changed from swinging to sliding doors.
The roofing material will be?
A, a shingle roof to match the current roofing on the main structure.
Is the building sign going to be lighted?
The sign slated, yes.
The, the one that's attached to the building is as well?
Um, I believe it is, um.
I, I might have seen a note that it not. Non-eliminated.
It says, that, that says the pin mount detail, but it says, um, to exist, to connect to existing power at sign location.
It does say not eliminated underneath the sign though.
Right, it says pin mount detail along with that. So that's, I'm wondering if it's just making confusing by the text.
Pin mount is what's shown to the right of that, and they're just like the little dowels that push the sign forward and go in, so that's pin mount.
Right.
It doesn't have anything to do with the electricity. So you just have to clarify that on your next visit in, if it's being illuminated, and where the power would be coming from, and if it's front illuminated, back illuminated. If you, if you were to light that each letter, it would be, all of those individual letters would have to be lit, so that's why I don't think it's lit from behind.
Yeah.
Um, it wouldn't be behind, it would be internally illuminated.
That could just, it carried over from the sign company. Yeah, the note number four on there under the scope of work would need to be modified. Or where it says non-eliminated would need to be modified, you just need to coordinate that.
Okay.
But just in case you're, in case you're talking to anybody else at the sign, but we raceway signage is not acceptable, so.
Okay.
I think the sign person just tried to talk.
Yeah, might have been.
No, Doug, is, is the monument sign lit?
It's internally lit, yes.
Is it, is the existing monument sign lit? In other words, do you need to bring power out to it, or is that existing?
It's existing.
Uh, while we're on this image, Julie, you probably recall, we just did the courtyard next door. I believe their street address was up in the sign panel. And I think these two signs are pretty close to each other in real life, so it may be a good idea to keep that design consistent across them.
Okay.
So the courtyard was approved with that numeric up in the middle.
I think it'll make it easier to see, similar to that night view NTS, like you can't really see the number.
Right.
Yeah, I think that will help.
Does she have, or can you provide her with what was approved, the courtyard, so that?
Yes, you likely already have it, Julie, but I can send it to you again, and I can help me in touch with the sign company, I believe I was emailing Brian there.
Okay.
I can send you what was approved per courtyard, and you can communicate with Brian at First and Triangle.
Okay.
So that's the scope of work. Anyone have any questions on that one? I mean.
Straightforward.
Fairly straightforward, I think.
The sign looks nicer.
Yeah, both signs look nicer, and I think the entry canopy will be a huge improvement to the building.
Do we go down to that first strolling where it showed the green?
I don't know what else.
This one?
Oh, it's all covered in snow. Yeah. I was wondering about this. Yeah, it will, it will work a lot better. Okay.
Okay, so if you can just clarify for us about the building sign, if it's lit, um, update the monument sign.
Okay.
And just work with Eric to get us final plans.
Okay.
At least this one doesn't need any variances or anything like the last one, so it should be fewer steps.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next up, we have Reviving Fence.
Hey John. Hey, Aaron.
Welcome.
Jobset with Naparilla Consulting, here today for Horizon. Project that we're presenting today is fairly small, it's about the number isn't small, but for the property it is. It's 385 feet of chain link and barbed wire fence to match the existing effects on the property, as well as two card access slide gates. So.
This one, do you want to go down further, John?
Sure, we can start here, great. Um, the fence that we're proposing goes along this private road here, this is all owned by Verizon. So right now, there's currently a chain link fence that extends from this corner of the property, comes out here and stops abruptly, and then continues on this side of the road, and continues around the entire property. It is met here with another swing gate. So the project, um, you could go to C2, is just to finish enclosing the property here with a matching fence line. And all up and down this road here, there is chain link and barbed wire fencing, all the way from, I think it's JPW and Carrier. So this is just the new fencing, and then here, in here, we have those two new card access gates.
When was the existing fence put up?
I'm not sure, I know it's been there for a very long time. Especially the Carrier one, looks like it's been there for quite a while.
Well, the one that encloses this property?
So they, they all kind of connect together, I know that this has been there since Verizon has been here. Um, there are two kind of hand-operated gates that, like, they've just been lifted for a long time now.
I just, I don't think we have any sort of back history now, when those fences were put up. I just, I don't think we have any sort of back history now when those fences were put up.
We didn't have any approvals for them, but.
And barbed wire is not typically something that is approved within town, so we're wondering whether or not it was just put up without any sort of prior approval.
Okay, that's understood. We can try to look into that. I'm not sure how long Verizon's been in the building, so I'm not sure that we can find someone that would have that information.
Yeah, we can always go back and look through aerials and try and figure out when that showed up in there.
Use Janie as a timeline sometimes.
Honored.
There were alternate differentials that we can suggest, so that doesn't mean to go with what is not barbed wire.
Well, I think what we were, you know, the discussion that we were having during pre-agenda was, we've got the Carrier Park right next door. You know, barbed wire is not going to be something that we're going to have to approve on that, doesn't matter matching or not.
So, really quick there, Carrier's Park is on this side of the property here. There's two chain link fences going along this road here, and there's actually blockade here that doesn't allow any through traffic. This is about eight hundred feet off of Thompson Road. This is kind of a portion of the fence that almost the employees will ever even see.
Understood, but there is chain link and barbed wire along that east property line, right?
Yes.
Which is, you know, opening up, attaching to all this other stuff. We're trying to figure out what's there, when it was installed. You know, the chain link and barbed wire that you're proposing there is not likely something that we would approve anyway. But we're also concerned about the other chain link and barbed wire that's there when that showed up because of its proximity to Carrier.
Okay.
When they're. Is the other chain link one on the Carrier property? Like, is there one on Verizon property, or the others on Carrier's property?
Yeah, there's one that goes along here, and then there's another one that goes along here, and then even along JPW's property, it continues going, and there's the blue kind of privacy fence that goes all the way up to Thompson Road here, with Carrier having their fence along the entirety of that road as well.
What about the east property line?
East property line? Yeah, so the Verizon one does continue this direction, and I believe Carrier's believe Carrier's continues going up into their property as well.
Carrier's doesn't have barbed wire, right? It's just chain link?
They do have barbed wires.
It looks like they do.
Yeah, there is a street view down this far, but that's would be easier to see that way.
You indicated that was private, wasn't it?
Yep.
What was that word?
You indicated that that was not private, we're on Google.
Yeah, that's entirely on Verizon's property.
Oh, is it? Hard key. How they'll access the hard key, because one looks like there's a pull-in, the other one looks like it's right in the.
So they're one way in, one way out. The one way in, yeah, it's large enough to allow a fire truck in with a knock on this.
So this is in Verizon's parking lot, correct?
Yes, I think if we look this direction and go out that way.
Yes, please, I can't fully see very well.
Where's there? This is the existing barbed wire fence that's, or chain link fence here, and this is Carrier's property line over here.
So it does look like there's barbed wire on both.
And then if you wouldn't mind looking this direction over towards the property that's here, that's that blue privacy fence that goes along.
JP doesn't have this.
Property. But it's straight barbed wire, not the circular stuff. Yeah. Which is also what we're proposing, would be a similar shot.
Fortunately, it doesn't let me go along that east property line.
No, you can go into Carrier Park and look back at the property, but you can kind of.
All the same style of fence.
Yeah, you can see here, this is the last post, and then it's just past that.
And you're looking to extend this.
Yeah, so we would be connected, we would be removing these three panels connecting to this post and then taking it down to the remainder of the fence that over back at this corner here.
So you're taking out the gate?
We'd be replacing that with a, actually like an electronic actuated gate.
Do you have any tree cutting they're gonna propose? Are there any in the way that you gotta?
No, so we tried to make sure that we weren't removing any vegetation, so we tried to keep it twelve feet off of the road here. Little bit of brush that needs to be cleared, but there are any trees that are come down as part of this.
So with us not being not loving the chain, the our wire, what else would you propose?
Honestly, for us, I think in this situation, just being such a heavily industrial area, I think barbed wire makes the most sense here. We could talk to them about something like an ornamental iron fence, but again, it would just be for this portion that they're installing, you know.
And that picture doesn't depict the straight barbed wire, right?
It's just got the three pieces going.
And this style fence, again, runs along the north side and then turns and runs down along the east side.
Yeah, it's on the north.
All the way back to the building, back to the building.
As well as on the south side, yeah.
I mean, I think the last Verizon that came in, didn't they tell us like how secure their sites were with cameras? They were like, if you're in, if you're in our area, you're on camera. So I, I feel like the barbed wire is a little bit overkill for security for an area.
This is the yard, they've got an enclosure. They've got their training yard back here. They've just got opportunities for people to come on the property, and I think part of it's not necessarily a bad thing so much as just to turn people from coming on the property and potentially getting hurt with your equipment.
I think the fence does that.
So fence would do that just fine. Just without the barbed wire.
Yeah.
That's the intent.
And it looks like that training area is also fenced in.
I think that is a smaller fence. I'm, we weren't allowed, we weren't able to get onto that part of the property.
The fence cut you out?
No, they left the gates open.
Okay.
We could potentially talk to them about just installing a chain link fence without barbed wire. Not.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would like a little bit of back history on when those fences were installed.
Okay.
So if you can dig that up, you know, either through historical records or aerial or whatever, figure out when those fences went in.
Okay.
And then we can talk about kind of what makes the most sense, but we're not really inclined to use barbed wire and the biggest concern is the new Carrier Park that's there with all families and kids and, you know, not only image, but somebody actually getting hurt with the barbed wire. I think there are other security fence options which provide the same solution, but don't look like a prison, frankly.
Understood. Are there any recommendations that we may have for that? We're happy to bring it back to Verizon.
We do, we have, you know, there have been a number of National Grid and Verizon and other secure sites that have been using it. You know, is it raw iron?
It's like wrought iron and.
But it's got the the security.
Huge, I'm serious. I mean, they're serious.
Yeah, I know.
Not the other one we did was Verizon out in that field, and they did that one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was National Grid.
Did it for the Verizon Tower, a high school property.
Yep, Verizon did it for the tower on High School property. You know, anywhere that they're public directly adjacent, certainly. You know, barbed wire is not necessarily something.
We've had a lot of those, too, so hard to move. Attention to that.
Well, yeah, if you're talking about Thompson, sure, but Carrier side, you're right up against it.
Oh, yeah, there's a huge thick of woods between the two.
Something to consider.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll go back to Verizon and see what they would be okay with.
Right.
We'll do some history and see if we can find out when that.
If that's one of them. Did you figure that out?
Okay.
So in a scenario where we said no barbed wire, but we, we understand the security implications, and it was just a taller fence with that satisfied their needs, because I think I could see that, too.
Up as high as the barb goes, but.
Yeah, and even in the future, yeah, we could take the barbed wire out and that could be an extension, so you have a nice.
It's supposed to go up that high.
That's just one way to think about it.
Okay, yeah, no, that's absolutely, yeah.
This is the blue screening from JPW, there's no proposed screening on any of the existing fencing for Verizon, is it true?
No, there's no proposed screening. I think JPW is very like heavy industrial yards, so they were just trying to block that.
They could make some, make some nice steel fencing for it.
Good neighbor's hat.
Is your parking count affected at all?
We do remove a couple of parking spaces to make this work. I think we move had it noted on here at one point. I think we were have to remove floor spaces here and here. And that is honestly to make sure that we can get a fire truck to fit in here without blocking the road.
Can you put a parking table on here just to show what's required and show that you're still meeting parking requirements?
Yeah, absolutely.
Any else? A little bit homework. For me, right?
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thank you. Alright, next up we have Charter Communications.
Hello, Jeff Neeson with Civil Environmental Consultants of New York. We're here on behalf of Charter Communications with a proposed fence. This one does not have barbed wire. Just getting that out there, right? This is at their Port Street Road property. I would say probably the best one to go to would be C201. Because that really shows the fence. One more, okay, here we go. So Charter Communication is proposing to install a fence around the entire property here along Port Street Road and Old Colomer Road. They are going to go with a four-foot-high fence, and that'll be the black decorative kind of what is shown here in this little detail. And then on the eastern and southern property in through here will be a six-foot-high chain link fence.
So the picket fence is black?
Yes.
What's the picket fence?
That will be a black coated vinyl or black vinyl coated chain link fence. So it will be very similar. It may, it won't look exactly the same, but it'll be the black color. And then there will be two gated entrances at their entrances, one over here and one up here that will be keypad access. And then when they have deliveries, they will be buzzed in to the facility.
So then you're losing a couple of spots here to accommodate for this.
I believe, yeah, it's looks like two there and probably two or maybe three there.
On his earlier point, you'll need to provide a parking table. So what kind of, what kind of traffic, though, is coming and going from those gates with the keypad? Yeah, we're a lot of party to make queue. Yeah. How does that work?
Well, this, it's, it's for employees primarily. And obviously, we're set back.
Bit of a lag there.
We're set back here, you'll probably be able to queue, I think it's about three or four vehicles in there. So I honestly, I'm not sure what difficult traffic looks like, you know, does everybody show up at the same time? Is there?
Swiping or punching in a keypad, or are they calling somebody?
I believe it's a keypad. I believe, it could be a swipe. I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
And it's a, it's a sliding, sliding gate.
So, yeah, that's why these spaces have to go away, because it slides.
Close every time, like the slider is slow, so it doesn't have to close every time before somebody else starts to go? Because then they have to wait in that whole thing.
That I'm not a hundred percent sure of. I will have to look into that.
Do you know how many employees roughly work at this location?
I do not.
And then our parking spots is.
It would be nice if a second swipe stopped it from closing and just opened again, right?
And I believe that's something that can be programmed into the system that, you know, somebody punches it, it just, instead of continuing to close, it just starts back up again.
I mean, it would be great if they started a shift at eight to eight-thirty and just left the gate open when people were coming in or something, but.
Sometimes you see, you see a barrier gate that's closed after hours, but then you patch a swing arc gate. That's a lot faster, if you're really talking about access control of your cars. I mean, is this, the gate, this is the architectural picket fence around the section you're talking about, right?
Yeah, around, yes, around.
It goes all the way to continue to that gate right there.
Yeah.
So it's really a visual barrier. There's no pedestrian. You wouldn't have pedestrian access to the site in any other location?
No, our, our only accesses are here and down there.
They have to have a car.
Yeah, how does a pedestrian get in?
You'll ride your bike to work.
If you take the bus.
I go through gates. Have your, you know, boots can move. Don't know. I, I do not have the answer to that question.
It's a good question.
It is a good question.
Because it might not be safe for them to go up and punch in the code. But if it was the arm, like you're saying, if the one gate is open at the arm, you can usually walk around with your arm, but I don't see any walk through.
There's gotta be an intercom, too, for visitors or something.
Yeah, yes, I'm not sure if their plan was intercom or if they were gonna have basically like a security guard that, you know, want to I guess it would have to be an intercom, but if they saw a vehicle coming in like a delivery truck, they would buzz them in. But I guess it probably would have to have an intercom.
Sit there.
The post they know above it, the code is one.
You got four guys in there that are gonna rip them off.
You think Doug asked this or all your? Will so there's no current gate? You're gonna put in a gate?
Correct. This, this is, the entire property is wide open except for some fences internally, but the entire frontage is wide open currently.
So electrical for that? Or is it that gate right there? Where does that come from?
You got a
It does look.
Semi right there, is that the, so.
Yeah, that's an interstate semi.
So the interstate semi is basically gonna nose out into the road before the gate can close.
Can you zoom out just slightly, because this here is the, the edge of the road, so that if you project that up.
Yeah, but you're asking that interstate semi to know exactly how long the back of his truck is, because you've got it within probably six, eight inches of the face of the gate back there.
That is, yes. I'm just, I'm looking at it. So. Yeah, it does have it fairly close there.
So they might have to move that one back farther, so the truck has a way to get out. So, uh, he just told me the fence is only four foot tall?
That's the, that's all, that's what it is allowed by code.
Yeah, on the west and the north is four foot, six foot around.
So. No, that's not true. That's in our residential code for commercial fences, it's all determined by the planning board.
Okay. I was not the original engineer in this project, I got shoehorned in because I was closer, so. He, he told me that, I guess there was a discussion, oh, that's what he told me, that it had to be four foot.
He might have looked at our code, and that's what it is for residential properties, but, but.
There is, I believe. I, I believe what he was thinking, I believe there was. A building up here across the street. That maybe was technically residential, that maybe had offices in it. Every.
Residential with offices?
Again, I'm going off of what he told me.
Yeah. Oh, he sent you here with lies. I just, what, um, yeah, four foot just seems like it would be very short next to vehicles. Because it's adjacent to a parking lot, it ju- just seems like very short to me. And the images on the, and the images on the thing represent a taller fence, which makes it a little bit. Like the image that you have in there is a taller fence. Down.
Yeah, down.
Yeah, in the center over to the, yeah.
Did this one there.
The taller, that's taller than four feet, that's your picture.
Yeah, hard to say for sure, there's nothing of real scale in there to tell.
Make it the exact same mention all the way around.
Yeah. Maybe bring it up to six foot all the way around.
Right.
At least.
Sure. It would serve as security feature.
Yeah.
Better, that depends six feet.
Nate, back to the tractor trailer, the gate won't close if the tractor's still there, right?
You're right.
To a point, you just have to pull, it wouldn't close until you pull.
Right, right, yeah.
And so you could be half in the gate and half out before.
Right.
So the tractor trailer is also gonna be entering?
Yeah.
The gate and having to like do the keypad or?
Is it too big?
No, there's, there's an island here, so. Ingress and egress.
So it would probably go in there.
This will be sticking out.
No, there's, there's a gate here and there's a gate here.
So where the semis are coming in, the also.
He'll be sticking out, so you'd wanna just push that gate in.
Push this gate further in.
Yeah.
Do semis and employees go in through different gate, like there's one gate for the trucks and one gate for the employees?
That I don't know.
We find out about that?
Yeah.
For circulation.
Because if they are allowed to go in the other one, they'll definitely be sticking out.
And so thanks, the next question is, will there be signage for deliveries or whatever else? Lot of fence with most signs, you know, entrance signs or.
Yes, the fence being put up because people ride over the lawn right now, because it still backs out that they're just like.
If you could find out for us if it is a keypad or like a card or just to kind of figure out how fast people are gonna get through it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great.
Good design meeting.
Anything else? You got homework as well?
Yeah, I have homework as well, so. All right, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, any other business? Oh, it was. All the favors?